Bill.
Bill. Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Who moved that? Mayor. Over there. All of the papers say I'm here.
Hi.
Indeed. So we always bring up the delegations first, that way they get it, or indeed why they're in big me. So we have Megan Morrison here, along with Coastal Protection, who seems to be a hot topic the last couple of years. So we'll have you come right out there, right? We have her say something. Did you bring a voucher with you today?
No, that's Andrea. We know that's Andrea.
Oh, we know Andrea.
Yeah.
She brings us checks on monthly basis.
Oh, fantastic. I need to make a friend like that. That's great.
Anyway, yes, yeah, coastal protection, something, you know, we've been paying attention to, obviously, because we're on the water, and listening to the news and the media pretty here. Right to know more about this.
Yes.
It was our, a couple of years ago, we were the top ten, it was our number one issue or concern at that time, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everyone. As the mayor said, I'm going to introduce, I'm a project director with the Department of Climate Change. I'm responsible for the coordination and implementation of our new coastal protection action plan. So really excited to be able to be here and speak to you about the plan and, you know, provide more information, a little bit of update, and just have this space that if anyone has any questions, you know, or comments or anything, that's why I'm here. I've been on a tour, kind of all across the province, it's ongoing, and so I think if you have questions or anything, likely other people have been thinking the same things and, you know, want to hear it, because that's how we make sure that as we're implementing all of these actions, that they're successful and as good as they can be. I did bring some materials, one for each of you, a copy of our plan, as well as our resource guide, the property owners, and some rat cards for your offices, which is if you're interested, but I'll just leave them and we won't worry about that for now. So... So let's jump in. So I want to begin, kind of by zooming out for a second and taking a look at this point from kind of the 50,000-foot level, to kind of understand the context that this plan exists within. So government's approach to climate action and sustainable prosperity really begins with the Environmental Goals and Climate Change Introduction Act. That's a piece of legislation that came forward in 2021, legislated 28 goals that touched on a variety of topics related to climate action and sustainable prosperity. One of the goals that was in that act was that the province had to complete a climate change risk assessment, which the government did, and the results from that risk assessment informed the province's climate change action plan. The climate change action plan has 68 actions. As we know, climate change impacts us in a variety of ways, and those 68 actions cover a variety of topics, including coastal protection. And so from that, we now have the future of Nova Scotia's coastline, a plan to protect people, homes, and nature from climate change, which is our coastal protection action plan, which has 15 actions. So I'm a visual thinker. I like to think of all of these big initiatives and commitments as puzzle pieces that kind of fit in with one another, coordinate with one another, and together they drive sustainable prosperity and climate action in the province. So let's dive into the plan. The plan is a three-year plan. As I said, it has 15 comprehensive actions. Those 15 actions are organized into basically three different buckets. The first one being that it aims to support informed decision-making and empower coastal property owners with the information they need to make the best decisions for themselves. Second one is to support municipal leadership. And the third one is to align government, provincial government resources with coastal protection. So we'll jump into the first theme first of supporting informed decision-making. And action number one under that theme was that the province released a coastal hazard map, complete with a user guide, and that's available today. That was available the day that we launched the plan. You might want a chance to check, check it out, and if not, I highly recommend checking it out. At the moment, currently, it shows one scenario, showing a worst-case scenario, coastal flooding in the year 2100, coastal flooding, being sea level rise, high tide, and storm surge. We have some amazing people in the department right now doing all kinds of modeling to model different scenarios or additional scenarios, which will be uploaded into the map in the coming months. In the coming months, you'll see scenarios from the current date, for year 2050, and another one for the year 2100, showing a little bit moderate scenario of what could happen, and then also a worst-case scenario. So that way, you know, we know that everyone has different models of risk tolerance, they can think about their own risk tolerance, take all of the information, and make a decision that's best for them. The data that we use in that map is currently available, and I'm happy to share the link afterwards. It's with our NSGI database, so happy to share the link after. Of course, we know that coastal hazards is two things. It's flooding, but it's also erosion. And what I've spoken about so far is really just flooding. That's why under action two, we're going to focus on the erosion side of things. We're going to enhance the coastal hazard map with a special tool that will be able to generate coastal hazard assessment reports. So essentially, what's going to happen is the user can go on, put in their address or particular location, and it'll pull up the coastal flooding information. Then they can put in a little bit more information, like, can you put a rake in your backyard? In other words, is it sand or is it rock? And then the map and the tool will generate a report for them, some basic information that they can use to then make a decision about their property and their home. Of course, it's great to have information available for folks. We want to make sure that they have the supports as well to be able to use the tools and understand information. And so that's why under action three, we have the navigator. The Clean Foundation is helping us out with that. Anyone can contact the navigators, you know, to yourselves, municipalities, homeowners, anyone. The navigators can help people use the coastal hazard map, they can help them understand what they're looking at and understand the information, and they can also attach people to more resources. So for some folks, they're looking for funding programs. For some folks, they're looking to better understand what coastal erosion means, or what they could, what the action is that they can do. The navigator to their in the local town. We also have the resource guide for coastal property owners, which have got some copies of here, but it's kind of like a great one-on-one guide for people to understand as a starting point, you know, what are coastal hazards and what can we do about it? So it's kind of a great primer. And then we also have under action seven, Climate Atlantic Services, which we're also encouraging people to check out. So Climate Atlantic is a nonprofit climate action hub, primarily to Canada. We do all kinds of research, dig on all kinds of materials for awareness and education. So the navigators are driving people to climate Atlantic for more information, but we're also working on promoting them more, because it's a great resource for folks who are interested in this topic and interested in implementation. Now, notice there at the bottom, it says feedback. So as I mentioned before, you know, I am here because we want to hear the questions, we want to hear your comments, but we want you to know that we're collecting feedback basically through every channel we possibly can. So, you know, through the navigators, what are people calling about, what are they concerned about? So that way, we can use that information as we're implementing all of the actions in this plan to make sure, you know, that they are successful. And then our final two actions under the theme of supporting informed decision-making. Under action five, the government is going to install many signs indicating provincial community infrastructure that's associated with the flooding. So you know, you think of those yellow diamond signs that might say, "Bridge will be slippery in the winter time." So it's a sign kind of like that, but it's indicating flooding, and so our friends at Public Works are, are responsible for that, and heard at work, and we're supporting them. And then under action six, we're engaging the Nova Scotia Real Estate Commission to increase awareness and encourage consideration of coastal hazards for coastal real estate. So we know that when people buy some property or a home, it's likely the largest investment that they will ever make in their life, and so we want to make sure that people have all of the right information so that they can make the best decision for themselves. And so we've, our friends at Service Nova Scotia are the ones that are connected with the commission, and so we've looked on that conversation with them. All right. Moving into the second theme of actions, and I'm sure this is the bucket that's of the most interest, supporting municipal leadership. So we know that every level of government has different jurisdictions, and that ultimately we have to work together. We know that sustainability and climate action is a shared responsibility. That's why the government legislated it in the Environmental Goals and Climate Change Convention Act, and that's why under action eight, the province is committed to support the municipalities with an important land use bylaw content that they can use to regulate coastal protection in their communities. So the first thing I want to say, just because this is something we've heard at other meetings, is that this example land use bylaw text is not developed yet, because it needs to be developed, you know, with you. It's something we have to do together, and we know that. We also know that there are similarities between some municipalities. We've heard that some municipalities would like to take a regional approach. We've heard that some municipalities, you know, share some common interests around the types of things we'd like to see in bylaw, that's the upper bylaw text. So that's where our department's hiring consultants, and the consultant is on to be doing a massive consultation with everyone to basically develop that text with them. This is, it's in the works, and it'll be up and running very, very soon, so we want to come on with that, but I know this one has been of particular interest for folks. You may have also heard that the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities receives some funding from the province to hire a coastal planning coordinator, and that role is really a critical link between NSFM and our department and myself to make sure that we are tightly coordinated on this and working together and making sure we're there in the concerns and the needs and the interest. And I know that that job goes on and is close, we're milking it in a very, very soon, so that's quite exciting. Under action nine, the province is going to conduct a province-wide erosion risk assessment. So this is one of our actions that will be complete in years two and possibly a little bit of three. And that's because this involves purchasing, for lack of a better word, it's a very fancy camera, that my technical colleagues understand much better than I do, but a fancy camera that gets mounted on a helicopter, and then we have to fly the entire coast. That video footage, then, there's modeling that happens, and at the end of the day, you get a beautiful map that can, that shows erosion around the province using a consistent method. So this map will be very helpful for, you know, bylaw zoning and forming that, but it will also be helpful for residents who are, who are living, you know, very coastal, like right on the edge type of thing. So that's one that, you know, we're, we're here to, we'll start giving more of that power. We know so often when we try to take action and work on any topic, that typically we find ourselves in situations where we say, "Oh, I just need to talk to someone who knows X, or if I had this one piece of information, I could do X." And that's why under action 10, oh, sorry, I thought I had them myself. That's one of the big, that's action 11. Let's circle back here. Action 10, so municipal flood line mapping program. So we're continuing to support it and support its work. Municipal Affairs and Housing is responsible for this program. We know that people come forward and they say, "Oh, I had some flooding on the weekend." They don't specify if it was coastal flooding or flooding from heavy rain or a river. Flooding is flooding is flooding. But when we do the scientific technical work, we often have to break that out into chunks. And so this program is really meant to complement all of the coastal flooding work that we're doing and the coastal hazard map. So that way, when this program is done and all the data is complete, our coastal flooding information, municipal flood line mapping information kind of gets synced in together and get a much more detailed, comprehensive picture of flooding in terms of the big picture of flooding in the province. This mapping work is being done on the major watersheds in the province, and I know that as Municipal Affairs and Housing completes these data sets for the watershed, they're trying to share it with the municipalities. Okay, let's get back to what I was saying about connecting folks with resources and people. Sorry for that. So under action 11, you know, we really recognize that so often, we just, when we need to work with each other, it's about connecting with the right people and connecting with the right information. So our department has two positions, a stormwater engineer and a flood management and adaptation lead. We've expanded their roles. I work very closely with them now, and they're going to be working very closely with the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities Coastal Planning Coordinator. The idea is to really make sure that if a municipality identifies that they need a particular data set, the province has it, and we want to share it. So we want to make sure that that's happening. If municipalities need to talk to someone, and maybe, maybe the guy question, we want to make sure we're connected with that person ASAP, so that way, you know, we're continuing to move that wheel forward. Across government, we also have an interdepartmental flood working group, which is really coordinating across government, you know, about flood response and the research and the work that's happening. And again, the coastal coordinator with NSFM will be tied into that as well. I'm pleased they don't have the two of these there for sharing anything in that working group with municipalities and communities. And our last action that supports municipal leadership is supporting coastal protection through the Sustainable Communities Challenge Fund. So the Sustainable Communities Challenge Fund is facilitated by the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities, who are a great partner in this. Like I said before, we know that climate change impacts all kinds of things, and so there are lots of different topics that communities could action and do projects on. We want to make sure that communities know that if they have a coastal protection-related project, that the Sustainable Communities Challenge Fund is the place where they can apply the funding to make their project a reality. The projects that have received funding so far, there have been a couple of projects that were focused on coastal protection, and so once they're in the right state of readiness, we'll be promoting them, so folks can also kind of see examples of the types of projects that have received funding that will go into coastal protection. And then our last bucket, so aligning provincial resources to coastal protection. So as I mentioned before, we know that this work is a shared responsibility, and everyone has a role, of course, that includes the province. Under action 13, we're continuing to make sure that every department in a provincial government has an adaptation strategy. So making sure that through those strategies, departments are applying that adaptation lines, to make sure that as they're fulfilling their mandate, they're building resilience for Nova Scotians and taking that consideration of climate change. Under action 14, we're reevaluating the cap on disaster relief funding. So this is something that the Emergency Management Office, now almost a department, is, is taking on. So they work quite closely with the federal government on this, because the disaster relief funding is a federal program. The feds recently came out with new guidelines, and in essence, the federal guidelines, the closer that the provincial guidelines line up with it, you know, the more the province can reimburse the funds that are given out. So there's kind of a, there's a big piece of work happening right now, diving into what those new federal guidelines are. The intent of this, of this action, and I really want to highlight this and emphasize this, is that ultimately, reevaluating this, this disaster relief funding is about discouraging repeated building and expletions. So that's really the focus. The second half to that is considering income hardship and equity, because we know that, you know, not everyone is in the same boat in the way that they are facing climate change and the ways that air impacted, and that really matters and needs to be considered in this. So more work to come on this, more updates to come, but that evaluation work is really where that will end at right now. And then finally, under action 15, this has been another one that we've had, we've heard lots on since the plan launch, but it's having municipalities consider coastal hazard information as a qualifier for infrastructure planning. The intent of this one is really, you know, making sure that the infrastructure that's being built, that's being funded by the province is sustainable, considering the ways that climate change is going to impact us. I really want to highlight on this one that the main word here is consider. So it's one thing for projects and infrastructures where there, there is nothing built, and they're building something brand new. Compared to communities and places where the infrastructure has been there for some time, it's already there. It may be in a place that is prone to flooding, and so, so then it's about, okay, how do we consider these hazards? And what does that look like? So we know that municipalities and communities access infrastructure funding from many different departments, and so all of us are around the table currently working together in a working group, really diving into this, so that there's complete coordination on this, because we also know that, you know, applying for funding takes a lot of time, and so we don't want, we don't want to add any completion or extra work to that, so more to come on with this problem. So there's my contact information, and I share this with you directly. Feel free to take a screenshot, or if you have it already, that's great.
Well, I'm sure it will be a pity all of you.
Great. You know, truly, I've heard so much from communities and municipalities that have been all over the province, and I'm going to continue to do that, because already the input and the questions we have received have been fantastic, even if they've been, you know, tough questions, they've been fantastic, because it just makes all of this stronger and better, and I think helps us to continue this work together as we move forward, so.
You mentioned 2020, the minister environment at that time lives here, and he was aware you were coming tonight, and he said, "I should come in." And on the front of his house, he's got a sign, "Impact, the Coastal Protection Act Now," one of those, quite passionate, but I see you didn't show up. Of course, our questions and concerns are, here it is going to be downloaded to us in regards to our land use by law and enforcement and all those issues, so that is cost to us. You probably heard that all around the province, too. Who's going to be the bad boy here? But I'm curious, I sit on the port, we just did a climate action plan, and it's going to require either a new depth of the top of the war or a whole new war. That's tens, tens of millions of dollars to replace that solely just because of climate action. Where's that money coming from? Like, that's the questions. And there's a 200 odd wharves in Southwest over, under. Yeah, but I mean, we're talking billions of dollars they're going to have to spend over the next 20, 30 years.
I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate that comment question for sure. I know that's something we have heard from other communities. I can only speak to what's happening right now, but our department does have a funding navigator, which she really works to kind of help identify where are the areas of possible funding to help. We also have a colleague over in Public Works, so between myself, our fund, our funding navigator, and our colleague in Public Works, we've actually had some meetings with some other municipalities, and we've asked very similar questions, trying to, to kind of identify a combination of provincial and federal and other areas of funding. But I would, I would welcome any opportunity like that.
I had a question asked to me the other day, and it'll probably fall down to our land use by law, etc., etc. But if we have two neighbors, one's concerned with coastal erosion, and the other one isn't, and the other one could lead to coastal damage to the other property, who's going to be the bad boy? When the order that would be done on both of them, and those kind of things. I'm sorry, I need to get asked a little bit about that. It'll probably be, it sounds a little bit, the bringers talking, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, enforcement at the municipal level for sure, but in terms of erosion, and I'm gonna, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to just interpret your comment there around what you've heard of, you know, one neighbor is concerned about erosion, one is not, perhaps one does something that impacts somebody else's shoreline, so maybe believe here and think maybe the person's talking about armoring, something like that.
Yeah, something like that to prevent erosion of their property.
Yeah, so, and that's where, you know, we kind of get into a mix of jurisdictions, so if it's below the high water mark, then folks would have to apply to natural resources and regimens for affirmative for that. If it's above, it's something a municipality could have a bylaw around, and that's where, you know, one thing I've shared with some other communities who have brought up this particular topic are, you know, if there's a lot of municipalities interested in having some kind of text around that, that's something a consultant can work on.
We do have, we have infrastructure that's being, you're nearly affected now, and I'd lived here well a few years, and I'm all, I see the change in our coast here and out, right, lived on Shore Road, that that's changed completely, even though it was until 30 years ago. But yeah, it has changed, things are changing. Any questions or, just that gap, hold on, it's a short gap.
I just wondered if there's any, any part of your study that has sort of looked at, it's a good example, if you look at the breakwater in front of our wharf, right? That's a new structure, with a rubble and a pond, right? So we have three sides of water. That has changed, the sand environment's changed, erosion, that's changed everywhere, so that's all of a level going forward, you know, an environmental impact that might be impacted later, and you would never know what those causes are going to be.
Yeah, so something like that. We've got some, some great GIS folks who are doing all the scenario modeling and everything, and I'm happy to connect them with you, because at the moment, our focus, focus has been like the entire province, but they're available, you know, if there's something more specific I think that needs to be looked at.
GIS is down here, and they build the breakwater. They look at change in water flow when it comes in. But that breakwater designed for the 50-year mint water, now they don't think it's high enough. They don't think it's going to be high enough. And the, the wharf, which is a nonprofit society, a high water now, we're just, I think that's, let me check that up. Your coastal erosion on Shore Road, if you see it from the water where a BIC is, the bank is gone. Now, that here, it's approaching their waste water and all that now.
Actually, the question that I, was that your question?
It's my question.
So, these properties that were in Totten, the one down Shore Road, and the one down with Saffan, around the province, so it's the province, and it planned to fix their own property.
Right. So, so the working group that's working together, that's currently looking at how would municipalities apply to infrastructure funding or consider coastal hazards? The other side of that coin that we've been talking about is what the province owns. So that conversation is happening.
So what's our infrastructure we have, like what's under that, that's waste water, waste water, it's under, under that property, so. One of the modelings, I'm just looking at the last couple of weeks of flooding modeling, Saint Mary's Bay, it's all there with, disappears, and it shows the flooding very well here. Now, there is a Now, there is a, there is a dike system there now, and so, that will, that will go back another year, it'll be gone, yeah. But that's hundreds, hundreds of acres away.
You had mentioned that if a Russian municipality thought of similar concerns, we'd work with the consultants who potentially plan policy, why, why would the province not just look at doing a policy for all of us?
That's a good question. I can't speak to, can't speak to, to that or to the decision, but I can speak to, you know, factions of the plan, yeah.
For towns like they'd be, you know, you know, where you see all their, we're on the water. Of course, they have quite a big hill, but everything else is on the water, so, there's some structures down there, they've been, water's been going into them for decades. One of the buildings I worked in on real high tide, we took the burner off the fence, so the tide would have, tide was high low waters now, hence the thing, but we would take the burner off because of water coming in the back of the building. And so, people cannot deny that it's, people are denying it, that it's changed, and they can stop the tide and do something, but as it is, value is long, you're done, but where are we going to get millions of dollars? There better be a few billion in that budget.
That's what the reality is, we have some people who own houses who, on your existing map, shows the water at their doorstep.
Yeah.
Scared.
Yeah.
And if you're in an act of uncertainty, that's where you can't even think about it. That's really scary.
And you mentioned our building back, a new project, I think around the St. John River Valley, if you get flooded, a little moving, but you can't build back. I think there was a discussion, or it did go through, the water property, and will be away from floods.
Yeah, that's definitely exactly the approach they took. I can't speak to what emergency management offices, you know, finding as they're diving into the new guidelines of what we'll even see.
Well, we'll have the no specie gar, take care of all this. You can say something. My wife with that, by the way, just to learn my thought about it, yeah, so, they did get ahold of you, wanted to know about a conventional, but.
What's on the list is a plan from the Christmas attraction to the, kind of, highway.
That's a great question. I can't speak to that, it's not commended with my department, environment and climate change, but I can get to more information if you'd like, or find the right person, I can definitely do that for you.
That's a really important link.
Yeah, for sure.
But, you know, you heard, we've heard around the other side, and now, here we go again, we're going to be asked to step in and change our land use, like, well, I'll do enforcement. And enforcement means people with special training to understand what's happening along the coastline, so.
You can force people to grab, you want to.
Yes.
Yes. Because this is open at 2000 or 2100, the way it's going. We'll be, we'll be underwater by, most of this part of the water for, you know, the water for 2100.
It's kind of, that's the other thing, too, is, you know, mother nature will have her way, whether, what we do or not. The other side of Water Street was originally a wall buildings and stills, that was all that, that was beach, yeah. Now, that's pushed way back, well, it's coming back this way.
You can't stop water.
No.
You can redirect it and stuff, but you can't, it's a little flooded, yeah. Any other comments or anything? Did you bring a check?
I did not, but.
It's in the mail.
You have all raised, you know, excellent points, and I just really welcome that we continue to have this conversation, and I continue to hear your feedback, because I take that feedback back and, and share it, so, you know, the more we can keep this going.
I don't mind being a poster child, we've got all levels of government on every one of our doorsteps, and we've got a big coastline, and we have all problems and all the locations.
Yes.
It is constant, we have provincial property that's eroding, but it's probably to affect our property, so, some trouble with operation. I don't want to cost us to armor this bank, I don't know if you remember, yeah, that was 30 years ago now, yeah, and that was around 200,000 back in 30, yeah, it's like 20,000, so, that, that, in fact, about 20 years ago, so, we have a whole lot more than that that needs to be done right now. Yeah, probably, if we get a lot of infrastructure underneath, and have, it may not be there.
No, that may, we don't want to send over to us, but they won't even give us that, so.
So, what kind of timelines, are you getting any feel when you might come back with a document in a year, two years, three years, and say, "This is it, this is how we're hoping to behave," or, or, or do you? I know they've kind of paused and do this review and start talking and this.
Right, so, I mean, this, this plan, the coastal protection action plan, is the combination of actions that we're doing going forward. In terms of the bylaw, if you're thinking about that one in particular, you know, you should hear something very soon on that, you know, like getting, it's ready to get up and rolling, we're eager to get that started. All of the actions within three years will be fully complete, but really, throughout from now through the three years, we really need to keep the conversations going and, you know, because this is just the starting, this is just the starting point for this.
So, it's an action plan, but there may not be an act per se.
Yeah, so, the government chose not to do an act, instead is doing this.
You need to get discouraged, because it's such a huge problem, and see the, I mean, the effects are there to see it. And to say, "We're not going to buy a lot of money, a lot of time, and even at the end of the day, we don't even know if what you do is going to change or mitigate anything."
Yeah, I mean, we know, we know absolutely that it, that climate change is here, it's impacting us, and it's going to force us to do things weird differently.
We joked tonight, we typed into something else, we said, "The yearly 100-year storm."
Right, yeah.
Most US visitors always talk, they enjoy visiting, you know, I have in northern Scotia, I hear that all the time, so, maybe they know something to be done. Now, any other comments or questions, or, I guess we got to start looking there. Is there samples, landings, bylaws that?
So, that's, that's really what the consultants can be tasked to do, yeah, by having that input to make sure it's actually something that's useful, that can then be taken away, tailored a little more to your, to your needs.
With so many people denying it's happening, it's going to be very unpleasant for enforcement or.
I think the province is actually hesitant to leave by taking care of their spurs, or residents, that's a thing, too. That's a big chunk of land down there.
Sothen, the one called Sothen, yeah, yeah, it's a large.
I'm sure there's more areas like that on the railway and other, which used to have the same issues, so. I think located as that old rail system, it's all over, all that way.
Right, what's the stretch, you mentioned this, the, just that side of the town?
It's Sothen, it's Montague Road, then up to George.
It's the old railroad.
Yeah, railroad, and it's right on Shore, I think.
Straight on the rails for trails, it's all around it, yeah.
It's real good north eastern, and it will be, we'll probably have bikes hanging.
And the air is the worst of the horse.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other one, Shore Road, actually, it's the picnic park, it's called the Wolf Office Provincial Park, and their solution to the erosion is to do the fence back. The erosion gets the fence, the fence back on the fourth one. So, that's what their solution has been, is DRR, so.
If you see that, the water is on the legal lines, and that's gone. If you drive Shore Road by RBC, you just see a road all there's a long, the other two feet is just down to the back, down to the beach next to it, it's 50 foot across.
But that, when you're back up the highway up there towards the ferry, and there'll be no, no road there to, to get to the ferry.
Right.
The Bay Faries is looking at a new facility in 60, 70 years. But that's a family owned property, so. Yeah, it's going to be interesting. Any other comments or questions? You didn't bring any money, so, we're a little disappointed, but that's okay.
I left your supporting materials, there we go. How much do you?
Well, thank you very much, Alex, yeah, we certainly got to start up some serious conversations here, but, thank you.
Yeah, well, I really appreciate the invitation to come and tell us, kind of, being a beautiful community, and truly is here having conversations. Please, feel free to reach out to me, and let someone here for a new work.
Well, we have a development on Shore Road, they plan on building condominiums, and I said to the man or the owner, I said, "I don't think you can build it," and he said, "I think I can," well, he's only got three hundred feet in the highway to the beach, and he wants to build condominiums. I don't see that, especially if we have to do what we have to do, but, yeah. Okay, well, thank you, I know it's all a drive for you here, but.
Worth it.
Okay?
Yeah, fun, I live on Eastern Church, so it's fun to.
Oh, do you?
Go all the way from Eastern Church all the way to this end, and.
It's a long drive, but my daughter is a Muscat owner, so.
That's where I'll live, so we'll check.
Oh, it's a drive.
Oh, lovely, that's a great place.
She'll go and check out.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Yeah, Andrew has a check, I guess, that's it.
In car. I'll go bring my briefcase while I go get it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have minutes of the previous meeting, 21st of May. Everybody's had a chance to look at those, the air's emissions. Done, can I have approval? Second, second, discussion on or anything else? All of those things, say hi, Ali.
Hi.
Wasn't any business arrived, so we'll read it in.
We have something, I think, to bring out, please.
Maybe, go ahead. So, the offer of AKVs for, for that, and, and, I love ordering the Montague route. Trying to, trying to buy law, so, I just want some clarification on where to start and stop, it's going to be for authorization on, of those. Now, it's going to be for on the road, it'll start at the St. George intersection, right? That's where the trail comes out now, and then, south, at least to the, I'm just wondering if, if you want to go to, completely to the south end to Water Village, or last year.
Those are really.
Yeah, well, coastal erosion, but that's one consideration, but yet, others, now, it's AKVs, we want to come in to on the beach, and so, I don't know, can't go claim it anymore, I'm supposed to go claim. They can't, yeah, they can't, they can't run the beach unless they're clear, yeah, they can't for pleasure, yeah. But, you know, they have beach access, and, so, I just want, I want to get some clarification on whether, want to go that far, or just to go real deep, or.
Well, I think, we don't encourage you to go to the beach, yeah, because they're not supposed to be there.
Okay, present. And on First Avenue, that's the bakery issue, is, want to go from Carlton to Matt, or what's the?
How do you come up down that, is that? Come up way down First Avenue right here?
Yeah, do they do that?
Instead of going across the Dignation, kind of, you know, through.
Well, I mean.
It'll be designated that they can't, they have a choice, because that gets turned, I don't know, developed into a trailhead, and people will be telling, and leaning from that, right?
We feel you can actually make that, it'll say AKVs, right? They do it now, but I think there'll be more, you know, those are months.
Do you cover it on the asphalt?
Yeah, yeah, there's months Saturday or Sunday, I think, 10 or 12, yeah.
Just, I'd be, I'd be in favor, kind of, down the asphalt, I think you've assigned safely, you'll come across front of it, I think you're getting rid of, getting rid of a couple of the crossroads that happened to them. There's a couple of lines, Colin, I looked at one, and it is a solution, but which still is ascending ones, but I guess they can cross the road. And think about how people drive today, you know, they drive through stop signs, they leave a stop sign, do a 50, basically, they just hammer, hammer down, but not fire, those spots, they don't definitely have to cross the road, and so, you know, you do have a one-off, yes, if there's a fire, fire trucks might come out, there might be four of them, how many times a year is that going to happen? They still have operating road vehicles.
Exactly, have to follow a road vehicle.
Yeah, well, see, give them the authorization, they have to follow the rules of the road, they have to just keep to the right whichever direction they're going, they can't, they won't, we're coming this way, they got to be on, on, on this side of the first avenue, and the other side, they build north, so, and have to travel with traffic, right?
So, are you going to have signage there, like a stop? Is there a place for a mirror, or something that they could have there to see the traffic coming in, or?
Well, they're not be using the asphalt surface, I'm not going to be rushing there if you're, you know, that's right.
Yeah, given that when you build, you to be able to come up that way, or they can cross, you have the marsh all there.
Exactly.
A choice, depending on where they want to go.
I asked if there's a mirror in that, they have up there, because I didn't think that would hold up, but I asked somebody, they said, "No," but do you have an accident, you said you looked in the mirror, does it hold up? Did you turn, physically look to make sure somebody there? That's, it's still your responsibility to.
So, there, sorry. And if you're coming into the trail, on the north end of town, and you come to Queen Street, so you're crossing Queen Street, and you're crossing.
Carlton.
So, where are you, where are you going from there?
Should get First Avenue.
Yeah, so you go right to First Avenue, yeah, and then in the gully, you want to make your turn.
Yeah, they either come this way.
So, you have to make a right turn, yeah.
Or they're going to cross with tracks, who's to, to, to the marsh all there.
Right, all right, so the danger is going straight through.
Yeah.
So, then you guys, rocks, right? And then you get cars going in there, and everything else, like we have before. I wouldn't give them the choice of either going after it or not, I just go out, I got to go on the street totally, I wouldn't give an option.
But where do they, where do they have a trailhead? Trying to have a trip, no, a trailhead and stop and go downtown, that's what they want to do.
Yeah, or they can turn into the, into the Dignation, and they're going like the rest of us here, they can cut the road and turn over, right? At least you're doing the safety, so you can come in and cross.
Come up down the street.
You probably have to put some kind of a barricade across that, because then, even the danger is the easiest thing to do, is go right across the street into the earth.
So, signs is going to be key for any of this, to say, "This is the direction, the direction you go," and trailhead signs too, come wherever decides to leave, it's key, because all that's going to park over there, you know, you're going, you've got to mark that this is the trailhead, kind of, you can be called double up, however it reads.
What happens in the middle of the day when that's full of cars, and they want to park somewhere, the trailhead, and on the side where the grass is, or they're going to, I might just back to what Colin was saying, that trailhead, trailhead probably should be on the grass.
Right, the other side, the whole.
Yeah, exactly, but you're not going to have cars and stuff in there.
Yeah, exactly, but you're not gonna have cars and stuff in there. No, that's an issue that we have events, you know, lock the basket all day, et cetera.
But it's nice, it's nice, it's nice, it's not gonna last. The human terrified stuff, there's, it's gonna be gone. Say that green space, I come up the road and it turns out like we do now, parking there. And the big groups are coming in on weekends.
So, Mike, would you set aside some of the gravel area by the dignity station to be protected and not grass? Because if you don't, you're gonna have, you're gonna have what you don't want to have is ATVs and cars mixing together.
And you can have, you have twenty point five ATV, so it's a fair chunk of land. And you get a little lead out there and the cars, when they're in the ATV parking, so. Be nice if you separate them.
Yeah. But my concern is you're gonna lose that green space, that's gonna, that'll be it all, right? It's a nice, it's a nice green space. It's the exact same issue that if we put them, allow them to go too close to the beach, to the beach or the erosion, there's gonna help that erosion happen faster.
Well, you gotta talk to the solution, so there's a million different things you can do. None of them perfect, so. You're saying First Avenue to Matt and then catch the, the old trail.
Yeah.
So you have, you have to turn down now to catch the, and, you know, there's that. Not suggesting we use that little triangle piece from Matt and First on, on the north side of Matt. Like where, where people park now when they go to church, off First Avenue. That, the red tracks went through there at one point, right to the table.
So why don't you eliminate half the stop signs that help them come off of the trail on Queen Street? And have them go through the existing stop sign there on the pavement of Queen Street and take a right. And they go all the way down Queen Street to Prince William, take a left, then it's straight. There's barricades there now, but if you wanted to, they'd have to go a little bit farther, right, get over. That to me would be less interference with three other stop signs going through that whole corner. You know, beside where Bill Lemire's on the store was there.
Oh, yeah.
On the exact same.
But they would.
And there's way more room on, and there's way more room on Queen Street for the shoulders, right?
Well, more residential though. Going this way, you've got five homes, I think on the river, that would gather cattle and then. If you do that, it changes. And yeah, I think, yeah, I think if you direct Queen Street, you're gonna hear, because it's all residential.
The other thing about the trailhead, where Tom's talking about there, kind of agree with him is, it doesn't have to be whole space. The very end of it on First Avenue, it's very muddy in there.
Yeah.
So if you went in there, if you went in there and dug, dug it down a little bit and put some, you know, number two in there and some plastic, you could give it a good spot to park there. That'll be safe, so it not interfere with the rest of the green space or with the good green spaces. Cause it's, it's gonna have work done, work done anyway in order to make it so it's fully usable, just down that. Just the very end, a little poly at the end, you can give that to, for a place to park. And make it big enough, you could park, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty likes. Just an option, just kind of. Yep, well, make it all safe.
Yep. I have issues downtown waiting for those, I'm paying attention to that, I have to see if they're crossing. Main Street waiting.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, but you need to store all the traffic through there.
But it's the same thing that happens when, you're gonna do a rescue and tear it through town, make it even better.
You're all sitting like that.
Is there, is there a such, you know, when a crosswalk, you have a flashing, like, which are very effective. Is there such a thing on an ATV turn at anywhere?
That's a good question. Fondue, can ask a question, you see?
I'm sure there is. And that certainly would draw you, kind of rider, slow, push the button. Doesn't mean traffic stops, but at least track is where there's an ATV there.
Not a number airway crossing, you know, kind of same idea, yeah, with caution lights. So instead of saying ATV crossing, so. Have a fun day.
Well, we need to move ahead, so we need to, you should, you kind of have that all investigated for a thousand, so we can just.
So Bob can grab that. But if we start changing to other streets and get a rock and block, we're back, I'll agree.
Basically, the bylaws is deserting. Not a street or streets, block A to block B for this purpose. It doesn't get them in the weeds as to how you're gonna, how they're gonna access it and all that, that all kinds of regulations and stuff after.
I think we've got a little bit too much fear over something that's happening every day, that ATVs on every street shouldn't be, but they're. I watch them every day, go like those roads, all side by sides.
Come up big way, almost every day.
So throw it in there again, down, down the south end. The way to cross that street coming from Deckers path, that's what they're gonna do. I've talked, I've talked to them and that, that's exactly what they're gonna do, throw it across. So if we gotta change anything and start from square one, we might as well get right first on it, because that's exactly where they're gonna go. I mean, get some tickets out of the cops standing there, but I mean, that's exactly where they're gonna go. They're not gonna go down and then go on that right.
Well, unless we put barricades, they can't get through.
But if they're gonna have barricades, they'll pull a bit of the way a little more, something a cloud.
But they're gonna do that street no matter what. See, I think George. Yeah, they're gonna do that street, so they might as well take that down. We gotta change anything.
Okay, you got enough to draw something up? Show us some examples of either end and then we'll have to throw that to the board.
It's tricky, it's the same, but James has got that property, but you can't go right down along the rail.
They be taking away, you've already made the trail that was down there. Right, because. As far as I go, we need it where it is, and obviously, we're going to walk the road. And having it down the shoulder, things are going now. Alright. Because they connect, everything's supposed to be down the shoulder. Now, it tends to side, the opposite side, the side of the rest. And through where it obviously is.
If that, the rest is going like that, you know, that's the.
That's what you have.
Yeah, but we're gonna get them on the trail, right? We're taking them off on and we're putting them on the trail. Right, that's, that's the plan.
Come back to the map, draw that, so we can hear the lines and exactly where to look for the crossing.
But on George Street, there's hardly any ones on George Street that don't do that.
I think the issue with St. George Street is.
What's where you're going, you gotta go out.
Yeah, they got, they got way across and they remember you got a path going up to the tracks.
You know, to get to the, get to the tracks.
On the other end, I'm just throwing this out there, because we're talking about eventually having the. And we're talking about maybe closing the little piece of the ramp road or the end of Carrollton, whatever. I think it's time to look at doing that at the same time, so that you're lessening the traffic flow. And the possibility of an ATV and a car being.
Size interactive transportation.
Yeah.
And that sort of helps you on that end, but I'm not really sure what you would do on the other.
Well, we can't, we can't create a hazard, but they're operating order beautiful, they pull in front of the car or cars and then those two have to get their heads together and that's all.
And I think, I think we all need to take into consideration the residents that live in the south end, they came to the meeting. We need to take into consideration what they all said, see what the best solution is for everybody. We have some very good dotted points down there, from people that didn't expect to have good dotted points. And I think everybody probably felt the same, so I think, you know, when Tom and I would sit down and talk about some of the. The demands and stuff that was taken, just to look at the points.
Yes.
There's some really good ones. And some go with what Mike is saying and some go against what Mike is saying, so we need to balance them all up to, to really look at it, I think. But Tom is right, we did, we used the grant money up to the projects to put that trail. Where Deckers Trail would promote, that's all grant money put in to connect the trail back together, so we can get that trail back into operation and rate, so. Realistically, they're not gonna turn, they're gonna.
Well, you know where they're going, they're going right to that dirt road, they're going up to a place where it's cut off, that's exactly where they're going. We get a few tickets.
Yeah, I do. And the depth signs, I haven't brought up depth, so we need the depth sign.
In regards to IRCP, D and R enforcement, they only have twelve enforcement officers for problems.
Makes it hard.
It's gonna have to be a component, so we'd have to ask the IRCP to step up.
Okay, we do that, sit down, draw something up, give us a map. So that we can, to this debate. Thanks, Tom. Okay. C L report. Okay. Under the Development Officer, previous month, we issued eight development permits. Development inspection. Eleven, eleven minutes issued. Fire inspections, there were. One follow-up inspections and all deficiencies were corrected. And there was one order to take action over hoarding in the building. Fire department, seven calls to structure, line control, burner, juvenile joy, one fence fire and one brush fire. At some time, had three calls and just get four. Visitor investigation center. And then the season, so it opened on May twentieth. Season started out slow with about fifteen visitors daily for the first week or so. Which is to be expected for May, it started to pick up after a couple of weeks and. And now we're seeing roughly forty visitors a day in rising. The ferry starts two runs daily on June twenty first, which will help our numbers. The RC staff expect to have a busy season this year as what, as last year, the wildfires and rainy weather in June impacted. The numbers greatly. And we've had approximately two hundred and forty visitors in May, which is forty more than what we had last May. And this year, the new picketings and dentists. Provide a nice place for visitors to sit outside and enjoy the view. The office of C L, lunch street upgrade project, construction is expected to commence mid-week. During the night, I think there are routes. The public works crew have been giving low keys for water valves to accommodate construction. They're also on site, say that the dignity reading on. High school building, high school building, the temporary entrance and placing concrete barriers or other temporary, temporary. Entrance that is to be used for the first couple of weeks during the construction. Construction will commence at King, at King Street, going west to West Street. So the area, that area will be able to be open before school starts in the fall, giving the school back, it's not on access to part of the area in the school plus. Lease agreement, the O P I C on Jim Longy Road. That lease agreement has been executed between Data and the town. And the lease agreement runs from May first, twenty twenty four to April thirty, twenty twenty five. And it's reviewable by mutual consent. Paying it is some dollars a month plus H S T. It's unlikely that Data will be using the building during January, February and March, therefore the building will be memorized. Society of Friends Affairs, a license agreement for the use of an portion of town property located at seventy four Sydney Street for the purpose of services of this. Society of Friends Affairs has been drafted and vetted by the National Council. The draft agreement will be discussed at the new camera session later. Development agreements, applications, update, a new site plan and concept for the. Siesta Motel project has been drafted and is expected to be presented to the planning advisory committee in July. A development application for a multi-residential developer in the second inch is to receive by the development officer. And is currently being reviewed by the development officer in town plan. More information has been requested and we are awaiting this information in order to move the application to the next steps in the process. Let's murder it. Done, okay. Correct the public works.
Just a few things, I'm gonna bring up. So I've been working a little bit with the organizers of the Multi Call Store Festival, which is on June twenty second, it's gonna be a dignity center. The first thing, we'll be closed for the day, we'll close the evening before, so that they're able to set up early in the morning on Saturday. I think everyone's all discussed this, but planners on Sydney Street, obviously you've seen it, the bottom two will be moved up. We're gonna shuffle them all up a little bit, so we keep all the planners there, just to give the extra area on the very bottom. First Avenue, no, First Avenue Water Street end.
I'm just stopped there, where are you putting down by the house of long?
So, we actually haven't worked yet, but I found what, I found it before, the foldable boulders. So they pour a little bit of concrete, they hold to the ground and they hold it down to the ground and they only stick up four inches and hold it down. That way you can be gear and stuff in there without an issue. So they're, they'll look a lot better, no more sinker, butts in the planters and curbs in the planters and so.
So, another quick question, one's on this side by Fancies. We came yesterday, I think the fire truck.
Yeah.
Take there, so.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're gonna come up. Yeah, we're gonna be shopping out in the basement, a little tighter together, so the hot damn bottom of the street. We just have them back to the, yeah, from the air.
A good driver. Rick said, where'd that come from?
Oh, yeah, okay.
It wasn't Rick driving, it was Paul's driving. Red dimension, I heard, we just had the, took the twenty twenty two charge, leaving the fire truck in the vehicle.
Yeah.
That was fine.
So, this year we decided to try some battery on various, just for our green spaces, Admiral's Walk, the fires. And Colin, look, the bond still ones, and we're told, right, probably even not the bottle. They told us to buy the wall, so that's what we purchased, two vault ones, to get about twenty-five minutes out of the battery. They seem to be a great little machine and they're very quiet, so in the areas where we have hotels and overnight guests. And then morning, morning, about a seven o'clock, they start recording and I haven't had any complaints since we started doing it, so.
They're sixty gold or twenty?
They're flexible, sixty gold, yeah.
Yeah, hundred and twenty, I, I just ordered two. Off-brand battery, two more, because I can't use my one. But I use, yeah, they're much, a inch away from us for the.
They're nice.
As to what.
Yep, they're exactly the same price as the FS fifty-sixes we bought, so it's, we can't blame them. If they didn't work, then they got a battery for all of our wells.
Yeah, well, that's why I like.
Cause the batteries, the batteries are two fifty each, a lot individualist.
Yeah, you could buy, you could buy two for every eight or nine bucks.
Yeah, that must be.
And they might, no, they're not, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, we have sent them to me a few.
Yeah, we're gonna try and see.
Do some three D rigid holders for the batteries, but a lot of them still tend to. Did you? Norley was off, the body officer was off, did a couple of calls for her. Couple of things here. Down on Pleasant Street, where our trail ends and district trails begins, had some complaints about four-wheelers flying through there. So we did install stop sign on each side of that river, just to try to slow down four-wheelers and the bikes that goes through there. And. So the new flat done, obviously you've heard me talk about this a lot, it's been a repeat. It's been, I don't know what to call it anymore. But the, the dials don't work on the truck now, so they've had a set of parts from the manufacturer trying to reprogram it, so they'll get the dials to work on the truck. It's, they're telling me it will be fixed this time when we get it back. So we'll see, see what happens. Positive note, new bathrooms downtown are open, I've had lots of good compliments of them, we have struggled with the door a little bit. I talked to the installer today, they, they've gone back to where they purchased everything and they're supposed to be sending us new electronics for the closure, so. That should solve all the issues that we've been having with, is that they've been locking themselves up, kind of with an air code. And nobody knew what the air code was, so they're sending us new stuff to put in the closure. Hopefully that takes care of it. And bathroom behind you, the center, it's all tiled, just like fixtures, and electrician's here this week, so by Canada Day, that should be operational too. And same with the mini home, picked up the kitchen covers today and we just gotta get the covers installed, plumbing fixtures and stuff in, so that should be good for, for people. And transfer station's been very busy, which is good because people are, I know it's not just us, but they're putting up the areas and the bridges and stuff, so. That's what I have.
Any questions?
What if they're hoping to ditch?
Okay, no questions, and Dr. Foyt, Nancy, this game is a report.
Yeah, absolutely. Now we're happy, because we don't have anything else to add, if there's any questions for me. Early on this little year, so we still welcome the hearing, but, but a bunch.
Well, we started getting right up the chest, maybe a little.
It did help that we didn't have corrections and didn't have housing, so thank you, I agree, we know that was you personally.
Her goal this year is for the problems to pay for all our roads and.
Thank you.
Well, let's try to schedule that.
You give me that second.
Okay, special constable word.
Being pushed on slightly, this is a place that takes the time to review, so I'll try to make this quick. Thirteen Mount Street, we had a building inspection, it gave several deficiencies since this inspection has taken place. Once you repair it, it may, early, the site has undergone a lot of repairs and hopefully it becomes a inspection to make sure everything is done. Forty-three, four-five, four-seven Water Street, since then, initial visit, as you know, has suffered catastrophic loss, new appears within nine days. Since then, the area has been, obviously completed with solid waste issue, but it currently had. One forty-three West Street, since being moved down to the step has been repaired, or were able to still be, still required to be repaired, my according to this report. Since then, I hold that as down in place. One forty-four Water Street, the damage on the site is mostly complete or wasn't the time of this report, since then, obviously most of that is also clean and debris. The only upcoming concern is how it will be able to be used. Since it's now wide open space, I'm certainly concerned how to monitor people in there after hours, for it doesn't get, I mean, I'm not sure what the, what the recommended council slots on that. It's behind the process and part of the company, but it could be a problem, you know, with cameras or, you know, any property in the upcoming.
They never use the other part of it. They never use the other part of it, or are they?
And we'll hope that that's the case this time.
Yeah. So they swap again.
It would be, it would be. So if that's, thank you so slightly, if anybody has any questions. Or want to the, the executive services board. CCTV report, all cameras are operational, there's been a temporary fix on the line, since the damage has only been fired in town. Since then, lines have been repaired, so there's now visual on the other end of town. Um, there's been an attempt for legal dumping on Water Street. A couple of property owners told me to try to better solve that issue, do, here's a lot of key, get a very good, um. Can you get a very good visual on a plate in town, so perhaps some camera upgrade can be considered for the next upcoming year. Parking control, as mentioned, this is a plan, I'm now placing a parking on the Kirk House Special Bank. Since then, I haven't noticed, um, area parking on the shoulder of the road, just had nights. Civic address, there's been a civic sign from development on Mount Street, no issues or reports. There are no issues or concerns reported, health control. Crossing barriers, taken a crosswalk safety webinar, with a, a, a job step at home. Many licenses, multicultural events, been, has been permanent along with DIBY downtown. Taxi licenses, all taxi vehicles not complete except for one driver, IC did not renew this year, I'm not sure if we've officially lost a cab company in town. And no, no work from one driver. Solid waste management, um, again, one one Mount Street, they were, they were in the vicinity, so legal dumping downtown. Can we seek some advice on how to resolve the matter? Again, there's also many things that I can do in every care, for limited information, go by. One forty-three West Street, um, received complaint concerning the abundance of waste, direct to public works, resolve the issue in the absence. Sixty-five Water Street, received complaint concerning noise and smell made from a neighbor's restaurant exhaust. And the video of the noise emitted and how the exhaust is coming directly at the window. Been talking with the building department and they feel that there's not a lot can be done in that area, or it's for the investigation of there is noise.
It's not new though, isn't that, that's been there for.
It's been there a long time, but, um, I'm not sure how long the neighbor's been there and now all of a sudden it's, it's an issue, so we, we will try to, we'll can do it the best we can and see what can be done if anything, that's.
The neighbor's been there for a few years.
Yeah.
Yeah, we try.
Well, and, and regardless, I can, I can say how long they've been, they've lived there, maybe they just showed up, and nonetheless, the issue is apparently now, so we'll look into it, see what we can do. And I can't guarantee anything, but we'll look into it for.
Yeah.
Well, today, when I come from the DIBY station, under that on Water Street block, and. The captain's cabin, he had his thing on. And you, it was, uh, so it's not just that one, I think they're all that when you put them on.
I'm sure that they are, I'm sure they are.
They are blind now.
Again, I'm sure they're, they are, but I have, in this instance, I have to research what the short or the disciple level is, that is emitted, what's allowed and, and this type of area, so. I, I do try to do what you will just to find it, if it is any meaningful or concerned, and if it's not, then I have to express that to the, to the public at the time. At the very least, I told him I was looking to do the best that I could.
You wait till coastal erosion gets up here.
I think that's the, for sure.
We got your contact right there, too.
Yeah, right, yeah, speed dial, pretty much. Um, one thirty-seven West Street and sixty-four Church Street, the additional that built in and has been a cause for concern, um, is also scheduled to be demolished. The owners are willing to remove both buildings, prevent lines and avoid fines, area will monitor and move forward. And of course, the training, um, the legislative conference, end of the annual conference of Selton Brunswick, received several days of annual trainings of deinstallation. Um, assist bike prevention, jujitsu self-defense training, and of course, donor prepared files for handling of select degree. Um, discussion surrounding self-defense force report and/or mental health training in that coming fall is being discussed now, so hopefully we can send our third person to attend, working with, or to attend the conference this spring. And that's kind of the answer.
I have one thing for, I, I, so, beehives, they're garbage susceptible, but they seem to be big enough, it's always full. And it's always bad, the garbage laying around. Now that it's weekly pickup, it's not going to be bad, but it is bad most of the time.
And that same landlord with, uh, one forty-three, Howard Water Street, black bags again, TVs. So I don't know how we can enforce that other than the ticket, but we need to talk to that landlord, saying it's all your tenants, I know it's his tenants. Because as soon as weather cleaned it a couple of weeks ago, day after, it's all back again, and it's still black bags. So I, I think we need to talk to him and say, tell your tenants there's no more black bags, right? So whether we bring, bring some from waste check out or not, to, to charge them or recharge them, but you're never gonna correct that until you go to the landlord's pocket.
Um, I, I spoke to the landlord in regards to, to the waste, I tried to gently encourage to enlarge the waste bin, in particular, um, metal ones. That are talking full and, and just empty. Unfortunately, with that landlord, a lot of our residents are also susceptible to drug use, which puts the waste collectors at risk picking up waste. So if they was to actually put in a waste receptacle, that people can just back in and dump, and the kids that has it, that people are flipping up the waste, even him, as the, as the.
But they still need, they still need red black bags.
Black bags is.
Black bags gotta go.
Problem, there's, um, there's an abundance, there's the tape, the black bags, there's the lack of separation.
Well, we do have a lot all around, around the garbage receptacles, can be changed, so if it's five unit, ten unit, twelve unit, fifteen, we'd demand certain some.
It, it would be nice if we could find another place that had something written that says, if you have, as an example, four units.
You have to have this.
You have to have a certain size to accommodate X amount of trash. That would also, um, that would also be consideration for low income housing and everybody right across the board. So I, I mean, it could be beneficial.
Take, we're good.
We had a good meeting with, with social services, they're proposing, so that went really well. Uh, we've gotta get out there landlords, I mean, you're not gonna change him, I know, but there's gotta be a ticket system somewhere that's, he's gonna go there and tell those tenants. Don't use black bags, tell them where the TVs go, and maybe he has to take them, because people in private buildings don't have them, but they're not able to take it over to Conway or Rob's gotta go.
Not easily, no.
So he, he's gotta be told, because it's everywhere, the black bags all up, look like standing on the road front, this is probably too.
Fourth top there, is it?
Yeah, of course, they're great joke, so I don't know how we get away with that either, really.
Well, that was there just for convenience, they didn't have to put it there, but they took it out because of the black, which is, until they learn.
So now they're just.
Well, they throw.
Going overboard.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, of course, it's, it's, they've had that in the newsletter, I think.
I heard one fisherman that they're being charged for solid waste down there.
Yeah.
Don't have the containers.
No, but they saw what they did via video.
But again, there's the video, there's the people, same with the landlord, there's the people doing it, calling the ticket, right?
Okay, well, maybe you look into the perceptible size, that kind of stuff, whether anybody else has it or not, but we could come up with something. Any questions for her? Grant, tell us what the values you got.
Well, for everybody else. Uh, so, uh, be working, uh, be working directly with the Public Works Director, we're gonna look at some trail grants that are, that are available to us, some more about trail work. Still looking for infrastructure grants, but we've already tapped into most infrastructure grants that were already available. And they are just few and far between, I can, I can get you money for reports and studies on anything, but there's someone who wants to shovel on the ground. And it seems to be anybody who wants to give any money, so it is, it's definitely, it's gonna be the biggest challenge by the way. We had a number of applications put in, I put in five applications, they were due, uh, last week. And you can see them all there, and I also submitted, uh, three final reports, which did allow us to get in some, uh, some money on the backend of a couple of those. They didn't give us all the money at the start, so, and I just have, uh, one, yeah, transportation fund final report put in. And that will be that for last year. Been working downstairs to be a backup for the receiving process downstairs, so I think a push, kick and shove, and the way it's around, I can get people's money for, um, utility and, and those kinds of things, so that's helpful. And I'm working with the CAO and the executive assistant to help, uh, take on some of the social media presence that the town DIB has, so come in with a plan and. Being able to help the executive assistant with that, with the social media.
Maybe get a free role, looking some of these smaller programs.
Yeah, there's, there's lots of them out there, it's, it's where you wanna go and what you wanna do.
Yeah. Any questions?
Obviously, you said there's many studies, I haven't spoken ahead about it yet, but I have an idea for, because we're getting at the end of our life expectancy in places for heart patches. But I'd like to develop a plan to replace the concrete and pavement median in front of those houses. And replace that with dogwood trees, and have the dogwood tree sponsored, because the dogwoods are drought resistant, and they've lost in July, August. And they're small enough that they wouldn't overhang it with it. But actually.
You mean the, the pads everywhere you dumped your stuff?
No, 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 in between the bulver.
Oh, the bulver, yeah, well, we used to, there used to be all these trees, that, that was all trees, yeah, done.
So a study to, I'll, I'll give you something up here, we should.
For sure.
And then talk to Ed and figure out how many trees and.
Just keep in mind that, that, um, if you're gonna do something that's long-term, or wherever in that area, the act of transportation plan identified that as actually coming out of there. Shifting the road to be narrower, making more green space on the water side. Just don't want us to be down one road and spend a lot of money and then all of a sudden.
What we could, combine the two.
Yeah.
Well, where's the plan to, basically an engineering plan is what you're doing, that's the money he's talking about, so that would work well for this.
Cause you're always gonna be able to get a lot, a couple of grants for a couple of trees. And then you're the sponsorship on the other side, so your money ahead, so, yeah.
Might do, be able, be able to do it all at once, but, you know, but, yeah, that starts something, it's got.
Okay, thanks. Returning officer, tell all of them. You're licensed now?
There is. Um, the report was in the package, and I don't really have much else to add, but there will be, uh, some recommendations coming forward, talking to the next report, so. Bring up the speed up.
Well, I don't think so, that's a fixed date, we don't have to pay attention, that prever doesn't sound. We just, go ahead, next spread. Uh, that's a correspondence, waste check, might have out there. Did that come from, I, I didn't hear that part, I zoomed in, like. Did that come from one of the units or?
Yeah, one of the units in Claire. But weed along the road and dangers and stuff, so we just wanted to send up their councils to look at it, so.
I know, yeah, the, the weed, well, the, that's been here for. Hundred years, you really can't, it's fantastic, wake up on a golf.
There's a county owner that brought up.
Yeah, on that trail, yeah, it's everywhere. It's here, it's invasive, but it's here. And you can't cut it down. You cut it down, it doesn't get rid, it disperses underground, okay. Moving on, keep business. Minister of Municipal Affairs and Health. So that's the letter, one year notice. Tom, do you have, um. Any, any jump, I don't, in regards to libraries, on a trual Friday, to talk a little funding, library funding and that kind of stuff. See where that's going, so.
Yes. That is a little concerning, I guess, the funding for libraries, where that's gonna go. Gather is, the IRCP labor contracts, negotiations, and that's been, um, to us. For that, library one point one million now, so.
We don't even do a Christmas here.
No, no, we, I've attended a couple, I just gotta point it to this. Those are the name of the couple Zoom meetings, we have an in-person meeting Friday and trual. At the library, it's awful funding for libraries, and it just seemed to be, I don't know. We don't know where we're at, it just, yeah, we'll have a couple more report, uh, meetings, and then there'll be something presented later on. Regardless of what they think funding looks like. I don't, you know, when you read this, I'm quite happy to mention that the halibut's around seventy odd percent in the twenty six, and reversed in the count, so it's a whole different situation. And I've asked, uh, the director, regional editor here, if she can come and make a presentation. Okay. We, we, should we have any concerns that we respond to this letter?
Yeah, it's a lot less.
Yeah, it's a lot less. Yep. I'm sure that it'll be debated and then accepted.
Yeah.
Probably our response by the president was actually impressed by her. That was.
Yeah.
Rivers of Grace, Astor Little Charter, United Church, and regards to fire rate. I, how long's our fire rate been in place?
It's the fifth year.
Fifth year, and I, I'm surprised it took this long, because I do, when this went into place, that other communities have exempted churches and cemeteries early, and, uh, so finally came for us. This, this letter was presented to us by, uh, former Judge Charles Halliburton.
Yeah.
I developed it him, and I think he came down here.
Well, he's, he'd seen it for a while, he saw that beginning, it's interesting.
So the financial effect, it had a quick look, and it looks like there's, the churches and cemeteries come out, and we take two million, forty, seventy four thousand, and there would be a subsidy base. Instead of charging thirteen cents for the fire, we have to charge thirteen point two cents for the fire, for the fire.
Yeah.
So that's the cost of.
So point two.
Thirty two hundred dollars would be, be lost and have to be made up by increasing the fire rate.
So what's your, what's your thoughts on it?
Shouldn't be churches and cemeteries that are excluded.
That'd be super.
Burial rooms.
Yeah.
So I added, uh, draft bylaw, you know, through the exemption, and so in this bylaw, church or churches made means any place of worship in the land used in conjunction therewith, and any churchyard and church burial ground, and every church hall used for religious or congregational purposes exclusively saved only for occasions specifically authorized by church authorities, but shall not be a gleave house or manse or eclesiastical residence associated with any church. So it's something on cemeteries and natural church buildings.
And the residential buildings. That's the same that he is with, uh. Who's the one that just did recently, Ann Berstner, one of those.
Well, I, I, I've done, find two sample.
Yeah.
One's, one was ten, Albright, and one was, uh, ten of, uh, Uplasco.
Yeah.
And the Dallas.
But Uplasco's had their bylaw pension in place since two thousand and six, so.
No, regards to cemeteries, that's. Up to, but maybe lots of fires underground, that's what we're saying, but.
So what's a gleave house?
What's a gleave house?
I got two more questions after this, the next one's, what's a manse? And what is considered an eclesiastical residence?
Well, manse is usually a residence where the, the residence, minister's priest lives.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so you usually. I was.
Yeah.
Eclesiastical residence, it could be residence, and we're near a church, but not, not quite, obviously, more senior or, or other.
Yeah. It's all the same.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think the time, was it, there's somebody else that approached us for time, put this one or the other.
Churches just ask. But we're very happy.
Yeah, it wasn't an official.
No, they were very happy.
They didn't send a, a letter.
Yeah.
Mister Halliburton came, pissed on, talked to me, and said, I mean, if you're concerned, you want to ask that for a petition, I mean, something, right?
Matt, have you done the difference if we just exempt, sent things? Do what it would've much mattered, would be much difference?
What about the cemeteries? What's a cemetery worth? Yeah, forty two thousand dollars according to P B S C.
Wow.
Yeah, but that's all our cemeteries, or is that just?
No, I, I, it would take me some time, I don't have that number right now.
Just gave you ten thousand.
But they're generally earning forty eighty thousand dollars for your hundred cemeteries.
But they're never gonna be told.
I don't know what the market value, how they establish a market value. Never say never.
Never say never.
Someone that wanna own a house.
Well, there are lots of ways on the ground, eh?
Most places in the world, they relocate cemeteries.
Well, they do, in New York, they leave you in, some countries leave you in the ground for so many years, and they bring you back half percent of the last, cause they just room for that. Yeah.
So the thirty two hundred's up for all of them in town.
Yeah.
That's where all the churches and cemeteries, uh, the, basically the exempt portion of all the assessment. So the, any of the residences are already taxed, and we would be affected by it.
So I understand a bunch of reasons why, one of them is that they're all financially structured.
All structured.
Yeah, all out, you know. And the other is, I guess, it's just simple because it's a church, so why are they?
So they can find us thirty two. We need your opinion then.
Oh, I thought it was two, I asked you about the fire rate.
Yeah. So it's, yeah, it's point two cents on the, on the fire rate.
Point two, so it's very little on the fire rate, huh?
Yes, the fire rate's sort of raw, and, um, it's a, everything's a root, well, almost a root.
So to exempt these and then change the fire rate to thirteen point two, we do that at council? I, I was very uncomfortable, we did this, but I knew we were looking for hatchet view and stuff, yeah.
I was expecting, for Phil, I, I was expecting a lot of kickback. And there wasn't, there was no questions, and so I went and then they said there's, there's fire pension for the hydrant system, fire pension, that's what, so, oh, that was long. Really, no, I, I mean, so, yeah, so, you know, it's, uh.
I didn't hear it often, often in years, especially the remarkable cemeteries.
And we say to their church.
Yeah, well, yeah, there's, there's a debate there about that, yeah.
So do you need most to take that to council?
If you wanna give it an exemption, but then we have to look at recovering the fire rate. So they basically, yeah, this draft by, by law had to be imprimed, yeah. And, uh, that's what council wants, we're like, absolutely, they're not appropriate. I believe that. One second. And based on the premise of this bylaw passing, then we can think of allowing, so just in the fire rate.
Any discussion on that, Mr. Council, for first reading? Yeah, all those are papers.
Yeah.
I have any days? You guys now all have a turtle sponsor cemeterium.
This is basically, when this passed, it all. Next April first, so for this tax, we get, and, uh, by law, government can give on a manual basis to exempt the tax exempt status of properties exempted. So that basically administratively just make sure that, uh, a property didn't change can or things like that, the status didn't change. It, it could be on my turf, but I'll be that really just.
Yeah.
Could not be, sure, I'm really just thinking, so. Yeah. Okay, public wash shouldn't, not there in the operation. Get some of us, a number of asked of it, whether the iron was appropriate for public washers. Right now, it's, uh, seven to seven. So I think it's more in the evenings. I know there was letters, I don't know if they arrived from festivals, one or two said to me that there was my letters asking for extended hours from the festival. And I told them our concern was later we'd, we'd become subject of vandalism. And induce rather more of a struggle.
Any which one's shutting down or?
Well, you have to have the tigers changed.
Yeah, they are actively locked, so.
So it's a hundred dollars to have the tigers changed, every time they change, so two hundred dollars for each festival. So we heard two festivals, they're gone, Alster Bash and Warfret Rally.
I heard some more for our.
Yeah, okay, Wesley and I, we verbally heard from Alster Bash, and they said they're happy with seven to seven. They have border bodies and, and wash stations, they don't, they don't need changed. So Alster Bash is happy with the hours. Uh, Warfret Rally's asked that they extend it, I believe. Uh, we have a, just call it days, meeting this weekend, it's on our.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have stuff going on in town till eight or eight thirty anyway, we do music twice a week. I, I think it should go at least like thirty, right across the board. As far as in the morning, doesn't make a difference on the cleaning really, but we have a lot of people walking in the morning. Uh, they used to come to the store all the time, like six thirty, and it doesn't affect cleaning, so, you know, we should open it probably six or six thirty in the morning. There's people who use it in the morning, walking all the time, especially in summer. Even if it's, uh, July first to the end of August, right? As far as Warfret and that, eight thirty's plenty of time to keep them open, cause after six, there's nothing to do anyway for those festivals. Pretty much dies there downtown.
Yeah, you have a balance with whether the chair go in there, using it. Well, you saw out in the air, but I said it, you know, that's the last week, totally destroyed. And then this one, the soap in the air, if you shut down.
Well, festivals do have their firework system, those are the big, it's a huge job, and, uh, it's important to have a little play, but.
But you're never gonna be able to keep it up, cause we used to close down before fireworks, cause that's all the way, boom, 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 boom. Two washers aren't gonna come in that.
Really, they're not.
Eight thirty, it's still light, so if you're gonna build washers, you might as well not use them.
Yeah, there's always.
Seven o'clock is way too early.
Yeah, there's, there's always a risk of vandalism, whether they're locked, unlocked.
That's right.
Yeah, the risk, and the risk increases at ten hundred.
Oh, sure, but, yeah, when it's light though, eight thirty's plenty of time. And I think that fits with some of the restaurants, when you got time being open for, yeah, food service running till eight or eight thirty or nine o'clock.
When do they get cleaned? Like you say, it doesn't affect our cleaning time, but.
Not in the morning, yeah, I can make clean between seven and eight.
Seven and eight at night, so.
That's why they shut it seven.
Seven, so they clean. But if they, if they say they're really cleaning them after eight, eight thirty, is there an increased cost or?
Very well for the day, cause I got handmade employees.
And stay open.
But even if they clean it from seven to eight, we check in in the morning, not gonna have a lot of trouble, I don't think.
So we have two downtown, plus the one that's opening behind Diggie, Diggie Station, so. I guess they, basically what we need, Tom would agree, is we just need council to pay those gathers, they want them open. And that's what they post.
What about the one at Collefield?
That's dark.
Collefield.
Yeah.
I think necessarily one of the stations should stay open that much later, cause it's a lot easier to smash something out of that.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, right. Uh, it's isolated.
Yeah, yeah.
Trapped, yeah. I'd keep that one separate, so, just move down here, they gotta stay open.
Diggie Station seven to seven, turn nine to nine.
Yeah, it's. That's a good place to go, up there at Diggie Station, it's dark, it's isolated, you know, people could cause.
They'll change the letter in the minutes. Downtown?
Yeah.
They're just knocking doors, so, they're on the outside, so.
Do you have an hour, you don't even get to post hours, we're gonna, we can't begin, we can't begin.
Well, right, the better.
Okay.
Yeah, they're gonna say, when are they open? They go there at nine o'clock, it's locked up, and they don't have. They're gonna say, well, they're never open. So what do you want, seven day, seven day thirty?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, eight thirty.
Six thirty.
I'd say seven.
Two said six thirty, one said seven.
I think that's you, eight thirty, or maybe eight thirty.
Sure.
But the morning, the morning. There are people, there are.
No, yeah, I'm in town, I'm in town at the same, since here, you know, I see people walking, but. You gotta go, you gotta go. I mean, it doesn't affect the cleaning, really, if you open it in the morning.
But you don't really.
Well, they clean at eight. I know, but I'm saying, whether it's, whether it's seven o'clock in the morning or even three o'clock in the morning, it doesn't matter. Cause the green's already gone.
Yeah, but it means they're gonna be cleaning after eight thirty at eight.
Or clean before they close. Or clean before, they clean at last, between, you said they're seven and eight, they clean? They still wouldn't clean it, between seven and eight.
But they're, they're between seven and eight, they're still.
Doesn't take that long.
They'll take long clean, they'll give them a public wash when they close for twenty minutes, and you'll clean it, and away you go, right?
Yeah, the first person that goes by again, they can tell the cleaning's around, around the.
Well, that's, well, that's why they should be cleaning after they close.
Yeah, that just means the first person in the morning is the chance to, whatever.
Well, at least, at least they left it clean, yeah.
They'll still leave it.
But, you know, with the money that you spent, and, and you gotta use it, you don't try to use it, how's it shut it down?
Well, they're used, I see, you gotta go through the data, I'm surprised, you know, here, here we go on from, what do you do, put those funny things in to?
At least they are.
Yeah. And how, how much of it being used.
Well, next week when we change the hours, they are gonna go, I don't, blow, leave these things open, they're just gonna get vandalized. Can't grow, you're gonna wear it all vandalized, yeah.
So give us, they need to know the hours.
Six thirty, eight thirty, that's, that's mine, but anybody else?
I agree the same, I agree the same. You got your directions, huh? I have a motion, please. Protect you.
For the next time, yeah.
Next time, but also, uh, that we have clear, clear direction, so is this something that needs to, uh, come from this committee or from?
Well, I come from this committee.
And I guess I actually have an end date on that, cause I'll bring, now the days are still getting longer for their, about another four days. And they'll start to get shorter, should be till, till the end of quarter, and then switch it back, or until they close.
Better have stickers that can be taken off, cause, cause you're gonna be re-stickling the doors all the time.
So, but all the bathrooms have very good lighting, I'd say.
Yeah.
So if we do it from May first till, I think it was November first, and we stick with the same hours, you shouldn't have any issues, cause the front of those bathroom doors are lit up and wet. So it's not letting anybody, it's not gonna be tricking or anything. If we can try to stick with the same hours for the six months that it's open, it's better for everybody. That's gonna save us money every time we change that clock.
Well, it's gonna be confusing, for the public, if you keep changing, putting things.
Okay, so one of the festivals wants to open a little bit longer, and whatever night that's on. We'll suggest that not change the time of doors, but we'll get, we'll get.
People.
Church on the coast. Yeah, when they pull on, it doesn't work then, it doesn't work. So, and maybe they can advertise in their brochures that other bathrooms are open a little bit extra longer during their event, so.
So they're not, you know, I, I agree, keep them open longer, but they're, as far as those big festivals, they're just another porta potty.
Yep, that's all it is.
That's all it is.
Yeah, all it is.
You're gonna have twenty, yes, twenty one porta potties instead of twenty, so, that's how they're gonna get used.
That's right. Twenty two.
Twenty two, twenty two, yeah. Uh, so I wanna put up a line, you put a motion, would you? Six thirty.
Sure. I'll sign it. Can you, issue add the other bathroom from seven to seven?
Seven, seven, the Diggie Station.
Yes, yeah, that meant, yeah, seven to seven for Diggie Station. Yeah, the government, seven to seven for diggy station.
Second? All in favor of that motion, say aye. E Ds, there you go, big decision today, it's about.
It's a new market. Why did that come word debate at a five million dollar?
I know. Can we have a quick camera? Second? Third? All there? Hi, Peter?